Okay, so I'll call the special. Meeting of the planning commission to. For a side of this is roll call. So.
Here.
Steve.
Here.
Yes, three people here, which is a corn. And the. And the business item tonight is capital improvement program. Physical year two thousand twenty four to two thousand twenty nine nine. And our past practices will just go over the items that are there for twenty twenty four. Unless somebody sees a real problem. And if there's no funding required for this year. It means we don't have to address that unless you see something that's pertinent.
Yeah, just a question on that. Is that? Is this plan fixed for? Until twenty nine?
Yeah, close funding.
Right, right. It is. It is not fixed.
Review that.
Exactly.
But this is just looking.
This is, yes.
The twenty twenty four will be.
This goes into the budget.
Yep, everybody approves it. Exactly. In the proposed budget.
Yeah, it has to go through council and RTM. So first item we have is on page seven, town pavement management program.
Push this button here.
Sure.
Oh, yes.
It should be green.
Right. Thanks. Just for the record, Greg Hanover, Director of Public Works. The town. This is our was become an annual request for repaving the roads in the town. We're. Got a. Inspection done a number of years ago and based on. You know, the condition of the roads, we're trying to keep a pavement condition condition index of seventy or above a hundred being perfect, zero being failed. And. Need about one point two million per year to maintain that or get it slightly above that seventy one level. So this year we're looking at mostly roads down in Noak section. You can see here we have Brookview Court Cove Street Church Street Marsh Road, which is a collector road. Pearl Street, the end of it from Chesbro to the cul-de-sac Potter Court and Smith Street. All those in pretty. Rough shape. We also have included Flanders Road. That is one of our major collector roads. We did the north part of that road a couple of years ago from I ninety five up to one eighty four. And then so this year we're proposing to do the south end, which would be from one to I ninety five. That'd be a mill and pave.
Next page eight, rich repairs.
Couple of years ago, we had funds approved for an engineering firm to come in and. Do some design work for the Meridian Street Bridge and also the Thomas Road Bridge. Over Birch Plain Creek because the state had done a cursory review of that bridge and found that there was some issues with it. So for Meridian Street for this year, we're proposing some funds to finalize the design and then go out to construction to replace the expansion joints. On each side of the bridge. And then also requesting funds to perform. For Thomas Road preliminary engineering permitting because there's some. Work within the. Cove itself that's going to be required final design. And then we'll be requesting next year the construction money for Thomas Road.
I have an item. On rotten long point road.
Yep.
Bridge, but I got a letter today from town manager.
Oh.
Calls me a tool budding proper.
Well, she has also that was.
Like. The design of that. At one time, somebody in the ground long point. Political. Area was saying that there shouldn't be a sidewalk. On that will it be? Will they be following the completed street? Objectives when that bridge gets designed.
Yeah, that. Project actually we were in a new federal program where it's funded a hundred percent by federal and state. And the Connecticut DOT actually will be doing the design work for that.
They'll do it.
Yeah, they'll hire. They have an on-call engineer that'll be doing it. But certainly the town have input. There'll be public input sessions. And things that's and that'll probably be a couple of years for designer permitting. But certainly the sidewalk is something the town would be, you know, at least I would.
From a safety standpoint, I think we should.
Yeah, have a sidewalk into Grotland Point for sure.
Well, or it goes to Montreux Code.
It would just be up to from the bridge up to East Shore Avenue.
Oh, yes, but I mean the access.
Yeah, if you kept going, you would go into Montreux.
So it's more than just access to crime one.
Correct.
Otherwise, we'd have to sign up that growing point residents can't ride their bicycles.
But yeah, with the town's new complete streets policy and just for safety, it makes.
I was just concerned. Does anyone have any other?
One question. This is a big issue. I know kids love to fish from there and dive and all that. Do you think the complete streets are going to support that? Or do you think people are going to have to look somewhere else? If they're going to get some traction to have those kinds of. You know, pluses on any kind of bridge.
As far as like trying to prevent people from jumping.
No, I think they should allow them.
A lot of times they'll have a platform.
Oh, fishing platform type.
Fishing.
Is it going to be one of these?
Oh, yeah, I mean, some people I think have suggested that, but I, you know, the aesthetics there, I don't think would. No, I'm like to see that, but that will be public input, you know, so that these all these issues can be brought up. I know we did look at a fishing platform at one time, but that's was not part of the plan that we had come up with, but you know, we'll see what the state comes up with.
Okay. Page nine, road underpasses, snow activity for twenty twenty four. That's an interesting one to see. Yeah, okay, page thirteen, Albert, we have. There was no funding. Page fourteen, my local drainage improvements. There's no, excuse me, no funding for twenty.
Yeah, I think we. Yeah, I think so. Reconstruction Main Street, knowing. Project money.
My page eleven.
In the CIP twelve in your agenda.
Yeah. I wonder why I must have had two pages stuck together. Yes. Glad you picked that up.
So Main Street Noick is in really. Poor condition. It's, you know, the sidewalks are in bad shape. The drainage is in bad shape. It, you know, has parking issues. So. We're in the process of putting a request for qualifications together for a consultant engineer. We have funds this year. To start doing some conceptual plans and some public involvement sessions. So based on that. We'll take you to the next step, which is prepare, design, detail, cost estimates. And. We're anticipating this is could be a fairly substantial project, so it may require bonding. It's kind of like a streetscapes project, so to speak. So. The. Money requested for FY twenty four is just to, you know, prepare the. Detailed design and cost estimates.
Any concerns?
Because just one question. Does a town have jurisdiction over Noank for streetscape type petitions?
For, yeah, their town roads, yeah.
It's kind of hard to remember all of what they have, what don't have authority for sometimes over.
Yeah, I mean, then. Certainly, we'll be in close contact with Noick zoning.
Right, zoning.
Zoning, yeah, but the street, the rights away is town.
Good. Okay, thank you.
So we have Mike is. Tending down. Five forty four. So have to go in a minute.
I've got it.
Came right from work, sorry. Oh, great. Thank you. So then next. One with.
Placement sidewalk construction.
Yep.
Seventeen. They said.
Oh, it's eighteen.
Seventeen has nothing. Yeah, eighteen is next. Replacement sidewalk construction.
Money we've been getting every year, seventy five thousand to. Grind down trip hazards, replace deteriorated sidewalks. This past year, we ground down about two hundred and fifty. Trip hazards all on Route one or twelve. Installed. New about twenty five new handicap ramps to meet ADA. And replaced about over four thousand square feet of. Deteriorated sidewalks and driveway brings. So this is just money to keep. You know, appropriate to keep moving along with that. And we're. Kind of identified. Library Street from High Street up or. Yeah, up to Allen Street. That sidewalk is really poor condition and also. Route one from Allen Street down to Allen Street. We've had some. Trips and falls on that sidewalk. So let me. Dress those.
Should this be adjusted up a little bit in future years because of inflation?
Um, yeah, we'll take a look at that next year, but I mean, we have some money left over from the previous year, so I think we'll have enough.
But it could be that it might think about it.
Yeah.
Because it's an, to me, that's an important. Important item. The sidewalks require a lot of maintenance. The ones on Westminster Capital. But. A lot of people walk in the street, I think, because of that.
How do you prioritize these things?
Based on citizens' concerns that we get in. And we have, we did send out some folks about three or four years ago. They took pictures of almost all the sidewalk network. And so we have, you know, identified the really bad areas. Yeah, you know, photographs and. Things of that sort.
And then and then ones where you know that there's been. Reported trips or something, yeah. It's just important not just always. Grease the squeaky wheel, but wheels that need sometimes they.
Yeah, it may not be so much if somebody, you know, if we go out there, it's legitimate. Falls people are having in a certain area will definitely address.
And I would say, Jeff, you're probably, you know. The cost of these things is probably going to go up. Future years. Or should. Yeah, I mean, or you're doing, going to be doing less.
Mm hmm.
Yeah.
And the next one is infill sidewalk construction. No room.
This is for new sidewalks, which are non-existing. For FY twenty four, we're looking at. The sidewalk in front of Aquanic Plains Park. There's a missing section from the gas station to the park entrance. And then also. Groton Long Point Road from beyond the west side of Groton Long Point Road from Esker Point Beach up over the Amtrak Bridge. To the existing sidewalk that's opposite Elm Street. We have. Money for previous years that we have some, you know, that we're putting sidewalks in on Route one. They're in the design of permitting stage right now. But for next year, we're looking at these two two areas.
And they got much pedestrian use in these areas.
Yeah, I mean, the one on Groton Long Point Road, it's like a gravel. Show people always walk in there. It's a path. Yeah.
Any else? So these improvements page twenty one. I'll had a comment on. Well, that's for.
What we're doing on upward his comments. Your future ones that.
Yeah, because that's not, yeah.
Yep.
The next one then would be page twenty one, facilities improvement.
I'll stay here because Casey. In case you could. You know, help on some of these, sorry.
So first project is. Quest for ninety thousand dollars to install a Geo grid. Now, this would not be the entire parking lot. This is a small part of a larger. Initiative to try and mitigate. The. Frequent flooding that occurs. We've. This project is also part of. An application that was submitted to deep the climate resiliency fund that Megan has put together. She's requesting about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars to try to address that. Like you said, that constant flooding. The Geo grid would not. Cover the entire parking lot. It would. Probably be the first section that as you leave the pavement and head towards the. The roundabout or the planter. Depending on. The cost of everything, we would like to try to go all the way to the planner, but we've looked at a couple of options. Based on the funds that we've requested and the price that it comes in at.
And would that take care of the flooding that occurs?
Well, it would help. I'm not going to sit here and say it's going to take care of it. Part of the the project or the proposal that Megan has put together is to look at actually building a marsh. In that area that will actually absorb the the water because what we're seeing is is more frequent. Heavier rain events and and you've been there out there and, you know, everybody wants an aquatic facility. Some days we have. Yeah, for for ducks and everything else. So and that flooding, you know, comes right up to the road and then goes all the way across the parking lot. So this is a. Step towards trying to address that. Is just a quite about, I would say, seven, eight years ago, was there a pipe that was put in? That was supposed to mitigate that. I remember there was an instruction assistant to stand.
We haven't put anything in recently. There is a pipe. There's actually a wetlands area east of the concession building there. It's classified as wetlands. And there's a pipe that drains there through Sutton Park and that one. Drains into Fort Worth, but unfortunately that outlet is submerged all the time, so it has a hard time getting out there. And then there's another outlet. By the parking lot where the pond is, and I think. You know, we want to, as part of this grant, let's talk about investigating if that pipe is. Collapsed or something. We want to run cameras through that whole system because that runs out through the chronic bridge, you know, Fort Worth Homes are out towards the chronic river.
Yeah.
And that one, we didn't add any pipes here, but you know. That thing, it just seems like it's flooding more and more. So I mean, I'm wondering myself if there's something that's, you know.
Or feeding.
Gone wrong with the system itself either.
Or a water source.
Yeah, something's going on there.
Anything else on this? My speech twenty two. Unity connectivity program.
So this is a proposal to. Build a stone dust walking path that would connect Thrive fifty five formerly known as the Grand Senior Center. It would go out and. Pass the hockey rink. Out around. There's a playing field out back behind. And then would actually connect to the backside of the library and go all the way up to the existing paved parking or paved. Sidewalk that exists. On the side of the library. This. Walking path would complement activities taking place at Thrive. You have a number of different walking programs and it also. You know, community connectivity between parks and places is something that consistently scores high on recreational needs. So we just see that as kind of a as a. Step towards improving community connectivity.
Well, it is is a path for exercising use too.
Yes, senior. Yes, yeah, because not all the seniors, you know, right now we are widening the path out of the corner Plains Park. Anytime you drive by there, there's a lot of. People using that path, but not all the seniors can get over there. So having a path right next to thrive would just. Lends itself better to some of the walking programs that we have and would. We intend on putting benches in so that if someone, you know, tires, there's a place for them to sit. And it also. Great flank, we would give parents and kids something to do when their siblings. Or children are out on the field, so they're not, maybe we can get them off their cell phones and. Or maybe they could walk again, look at their cell.
No, I heard some people said they would like a walking path somewhere other than what's in the.
Other than aquatic plants, yeah.
And so this could serve that purpose. Plus it's got good access to parking.
Well, exactly. Right, yeah.
Okay, next is on page twenty three, of course.
Okay. So this, actually, the request was for two hundred and fifty eight thousand. It has been reduced in half to a hundred and twenty nine thousand. And this is to continue making renovations to the golf course. Fairway bunkers. Rebuilding tees and renovating both, yeah, fairway bunkers on on the number five hole. You know, one of the. One of our goals is to maintain a certain pace of play on the golf course. And what happens over a year, over time is the bunkers. You know, they're all sand bunkers. You hit a ball in there, you whack at it a couple of times, you spray sand up onto the face of the bunker. And what started off, you know, thirty, forty, fifty years ago as a bunker that was, you know, maybe two feet deep. Is now six feet deep because that sand has been sprayed up onto the front and that just slows down the pace of play. And, you know, all of these recommendations come from a study that was done a number of years ago. With recommendations to. To make improvements to the to the course.
I can't.
Is this maintenance?
Well, kind of is that the way you would look at this is?
No, I. No, these are renovations. I. It's a higher level than maintenance.
Okay, alright.
I ask this question every year. Of five hundred thousand to essentially move sand? Uh, no, it's not. It's not just.
I sure can't comprehend that.
It's not just moving sand. So when you have a six-foot bunker, you have to. You have to take the entire face of that off. And rebuild it. So it's it's not. It's. Actually. Less sand. It's not just dumping more sand in to try to fill a hole because what you're doing is you're, like I said, you're you're taking a six-foot bunker. Taking the entire face off of it, the back of it also. And bringing that whole thing down.
You're reshaping.
Reshaping it, exactly. And it's, you know, it's it's not just one bunker, you know, it could be three or four, depending on the particular hole.
Yeah, like that first year is three holes. But it just it blows my mind. It's that expensive. Yeah. Next is page twenty four. Mark Investments ADA.
Yes, this request is for a hundred and thirty five thousand dollars to make renovations to the Calvin Burrows. Bathroom and concession stand. In two thousand and thirteen, we had a company come in and look at all of the recreational facilities in town. Make an assessment of. Their, the facility's ability to meet ADA compliance. They made a number of recommendations. We have, over the years, been implementing and funding some of those recommendations. Most recently, probably the biggest. Biggest one was we invested in Esker Point Beach and making renovations to that bathroom. These are all things that were really required to do. So we're just trying to. You know, each year knock out a few. Improvements.
Any comments? Next athletic field, page twenty five.
I think that's there it out.
Oops, I'm sorry.
That's okay. We're seeking state.
And same with us. Straight, straight. After tree. Sorry. And twenty seven. Funds requesting. Page twenty eight. Boink Neighborhood Park.
Yes.
So this is a final solution.
Oh, one. I I believe so. We have. We have gone. We have gone through. The. Planning and permitting process down in Noink.
Well, for this.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah. We had a public hearing, I think, last. Spring. Invited. We had. Packed the place, so it's not that big, but we packed them in and, you know, the. The biggest concern was we had originally proposed a portal at. And at the end of the meeting, the portal that was gone from the plans. So this is a, this is a two-phase project to, you know. Rebuild. That park. Just to. Create a more welcoming space. We're going to be putting in a new fence, some more paths through the park. And eventually plan on putting in a playground there. And. Just trying to make it a more welcoming place. Creating a couple of seating areas so that folks can go and just kind of relax and. Just. Make it a little bit nicer. Space than it is now.
And we had this comment from. How it affects physically your twenty five, so you just pass this on.
I will, yeah.
Any other comments? And that's. The, no, the part, oh, the part, you know, what to do with that.
Yeah. Yes, there was. There was much discussion. Over the years, yes.
Good to see him finally. Page twenty nine. No funds requesting. Twenty four, same with page thirty, hockey. Page thirty one, I know this is. Facility or no funds requested.
Yeah, well, they were requested, but they were cut. Getting public input, but. Two thousand nine, we did a recreational needs assessment and the number one need was an indoor pool. In two thousand twenty, we did a recreational needs assessment. Guess what the number one request was for? And in twenty twenty two, we did a clutch test of priorities and either a major or a minor pool facility was. The highest identified need. So. I think, in my opinion, the public has spoken.
Well, we had a, there was a bonding issue several years ago. On a pool.
At the high school.
And it got defeated.
Right. Oh, well, yes, at the.
As soon as they saw the cost, I think.
Yeah. Yep.
So maybe you should just put in here funding for referendum.
Well, you know, funding feasibility study would actually be able to tell us, give us the details that are what's going to cost to build, what is going to. And. You know, what kind of revenue we're going to generate. So I think.
Can't generate revenue.
Oh, sure. Yeah, I mean, we're. Parks and Recreation Department is paying. Every point thirty four thousand dollars a year to have access, limited access to their pool. The high school is paying more than that. So, you know, we're invested, the town is paying almost a hundred thousand dollars here, just. Just to have access, limited access to the pool at every point. City base as well.
I would imagine.
Yeah. Oh, right. Yep. Yeah, so.
High school, age thirty four, high school athletic facilities.
Good evening. If Dr. Kennedy will be today.
Hi, everybody. I'm the tech director for Grotton Public Schools, Clint Kennedy. Nice to, nice to see all of you. Thank you for having time for us.
I'm Sam Kelpin. So is.
So we're on page thirty four, Fitch High School. For page. Thirty eight. Thirty nine.
You're on page thirty eight. I'll have some comments.
Well, he's just requesting really, why do we need? A facility, but if you could just, I think on that one, just.
I think you made the same comment last time, last year.
Since it doesn't affect. Any spending. There's on page thirty nine, security cameras.
Dr. Kennedy, can you speak on it?
Yes, so we have been, we have three beautiful new schools over the last couple of years, which are wonderful and fully outfitted with. Internal cameras, external cameras, systems to monitor those. So school administration. It been when sadly police are called in to view those and so forth. We have. In the other four school buildings and the central office, we have very, very dated. Camera equipment that's often failing. There's just, there was not enough to begin with. And that's both failing from the internal management side to connect those cameras as well as the actual cameras that have. So what we've done is we've built a plan to do. If you humor me, it's kind of three layers. Layer one is really replace and add new cameras or internally and externally for those. Older schools that need it and the resources internally on the network to manage that. Number two, we're adding a software layer to allow us to bring every camera across every school and central office together. Really for two purposes. One, so I can give an account to Sam and the superintendent and the building administrator so they can view those when they want to at will. But number two, be able to hold hand off that same account. So as the rotten police force. Fire and others need those in case of an emergency, they would then be able to have seamless access to it as opposed to us how we currently do it. Where we'd need to grant them access to the building, get in, access those cameras again in the older buildings and so forth. So that's layer two. One is to replace and add cameras. Layer two is that tying together all those cameras across the district for software. And then ultimately, number three, which is part of this larger picture of CIP request, is a piece of software called Mutualink. That we brought public schools along with the town PD and city PD and others are pulling together. Which would allow us to leverage those first two layers so that if an emergency button was hit on a phone. A panic button under a desk, what have you, a line would open up between. School personnel, police personnel, fire personnel. And it would pinpoint exactly where that button that occurred, that incident occurred, which would bring up a voice channel, the cameras that are there as well. So that those first responders as well as school administration, as well as maintenance would have direct access to connect. As well as see what's going on. Because as you can imagine, if we do the first two, we would have literally a couple hundred, if not more, cameras around the district. And if we're alerted to an issue at the high school, we would then have first two layers gets us access to that. But if we're looking at seven cameras and trying to pinpoint where that particular issue is and someone is in need or there's an emergency response. We don't have the ability to do that. So again, layer one is really get the hardware and software at each individual school up to speed, focusing on those four schools and central office. Two, stitch it all together so that a single account with the appropriate security, of course, could access those cameras and so forth. And then three would really be this mutual link system that we've been investigating in partnership with the town and city PD and the fire department. That's really kind of the big picture.
And then price represents.
The two hundred and fifty thousand are the first two tiers. There's a separate ask for mutual language, which is that top third tier.
Central offices and listed on the on this sheet.
It is, it would be.
Where does somebody look? Is there like, is there one place that someone observes all this stuff?
So you would have too often, you would have an app on your phone if you were designated as someone to be able to do this securely. But also there's a web based component. We've talked this through with the PD and they would, we'd want to make sure that each of their squad cars were set up with that and so forth. So if they pull into. Get called and pulled into an incident, they would have optics from their squad car or or their designated, you know, phone to be able to see those cameras and access. I believe that was your question.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I just, you know, like, you've seen these failures in these systems. All the time. They're not thought out.
Sure, sure.
And not that I can think it out, but.
And and currently we have three wonderful new systems that were part of the building projects in middle school, in Mystic River and Thames River. Those are fabulous. Thank you. Thank you, State of Connection. Thank you, rotten. Thank you taxpayers. But we want to really stitch this together so we don't have haves and have nots. And I can say secure, we have this coverage across all schools.
An excellent story.
Yeah, which is key, timely access.
Yeah, so. Any, any other questions? Okay, page forty, district safety and security.
Right, that's a request for the mutual link portion. Would also. When, when, when the system is alerted at a particular school and a by a particular camera or a. Panic button or whatever it might alert the police, it actually goes directly to that camera. And then this system will actually follow the event along. As it proceeds throughout the school so that as the police are arriving, it may have been near the main office when the alert first came in. But if that person or the event moves down the hallway to another section of building, it actually follows them down there so that the police know that it.
Is it face recognition?
It's looking at a bunch of different things. Certainly face recognition, if we turn that component on and we have the ability to turn these on for privacy issues and so forth. It also is looking for movement and the, you know, it it will scan where the original event was taken. And kind of learn that vision and if it can pick up similar bodies, clothing or large objects in it.
You can tag somebody in, you can say.
The computer tries to do it. The word, the term artificial intelligence is completely overused these days in the popular press and so forth. But there is an element of machine learning to try to identify that. Is it perfect? No. Will it allow you to? Yes. It at least know where you start. So that it will attempt to follow it. And then, of course, you know where to start as someone who's responding. So you know. You have a, it's laid on to a footprint, a map of the school. And and the footprint of that building. So then you could have logically follow it as well. Again, as opposed to going after seventy or eighty cameras. Up on the hill here across internal, external, both schools and the like.
This method of initiating an alarm, is that already in place?
Uh, we do have panic buttons in all of our schools. And that does alert authorities. It doesn't, this mutual link system would allow us to tie together again. Voice both through the walkie talkies that we have, the radios as well as cell phones and so forth, and tie the cameras together and so forth. So.
I just just meant initiating it. Does that have to be added on to this?
So we will be adding a few panic buttons here and there in additional areas, but you can trigger it through a panic button.
But are these, these have to be added as a capital thing or you already, this funding that you're requesting includes that or.
Specifically for the panic buttons?
Well, or whatever else you need.
So that the capital request is for the licensing and the installation, that third tier for the software. The first tier will cover cameras.
Everything. So the whole thing.
Yep, it's not additional expenditure.
That's what I was. Whether we should be asking.
Yeah, no, that covers all three tiers between these two.
Sometimes the initiation is a real problem.
It's critical to identify the issue so then we can address it. Yes.
Well, you can't monitor, say, a hundred cam displays and see every.
Agreed. One hundred percent agreed.
Okay, page forty one, there's no funding requested. Page forty two, Bitch High School Sewer Line Repair.
Right, so back in December, we. Discovered that there was a sewer leak in a tunnel at Fitch High School. And we had to bring in an outside contractor to work in the combined space. And as we down. Through the tunnel, we found out that it was more extensive than just that leak at that point. And so they came in with CCTV cameras and. Shot all of the lines down in that section of the building, which is in the gymnasium or the locker room areas, which is the original portion of the building. So these. Pipes are fifty to seventy years old, I guess, pretty close to seventy years old now. Some of those pipes don't even exist any longer. That one drain in the boys locker room, for instance, was just. Going down into the soil below the slab. So a lot of these pipes are below slab, not accessible. Some are in tunnels. And so. This is the estimate that we were given in order to make the repairs to those. There may be. As those repairs made, it is possible that we could find more damage than. Is seen presently with the cameras that they sent down there, but we feel pretty confident that.
Any concerns? Page forty four, Human Services Building, Changing People.
Thank you very much.
The Human Services Building was previously library and before that it was. In Aquatic Church School built in nineteen thirteen, but nineteen seventy seven, we did some renovations there. The windows were put in at that time that are. Currently there, they're really a residential grade type of window there. And we've had constant complaints from the. Employees there about air leakage and getting cold and stuff. So we're just hoping to fund the design and replacement of all the windows.
They have to be hurricane.
We have the airborne debris regions, you know. All that, yeah.
Don't want to have a school problem.
No, we learned a lesson that that one. What's that? Hurricane.
Windows, no, no.
Now they have to, the glaze, the glass itself has to withstand like a two by four being shot at at a certain speed. Still in the codes.
Is that commercial or residential? We don't have to.
This isn't residential.
I know, I'm just asking.
Just commercially, yeah, for sure. I know.
Don't have to do it anymore for residential. Someone sued and they said it wasn't.
Residential, I don't know, maybe.
One of the last ones that I was impressed. They had a branch that threw him into the ground that he could almost not pull out because of the. Yeah, no, it's that strong. Okay, page forty four, funding. For page forty six, Town Hall Complex.
Um, let's see, last year we had funding approved to hire an architect to look at a space utilization study. And we're also looking at redoing the. All the HVAC system to that zero for that building. This is the community center building. And redoing the exterior envelope. So we're putting in funds to complete the design and then. Develop bid documents for renovations and then. You know, assuming the council wants to go forward with this, we haven't gotten the price tag yet, but you know, the construction funds would be in twenty five, six.
Are there things that should be moved out of the basement of the town hall into this building?
Yeah, one of the things we're looking at moving out is IT. Putting them on the second floor.
I I think that.
Yeah. Yeah, let me, let me back up. The functions we're looking at, we've got in the A wing, which is the two story, that's the old original high school that faces Route One. Looking at Parks and Rec coming up there from Spicer House. So there. All the program was based. And then we're also looking at moving judge or probate over to the second floor because they are really crap. I don't know if you've ever been in town hall. It's a regional judge approbate now with Stonington Allegard and.
Town Hall is pretty small.
Town Hall is small, where they are, they they're just climbing over each other. So we're looking at putting them on the second floor along with IT. And then, you know, refurbishing the auditorium space for, you know, performing arts. There and then the rest would be a program space for, you know, parks and recreation.
But those things then would be a big, I thought it pushed those through, I would think, as soon as we can afford it.
Yeah.
Is it really worth it? Or put maybe save it a lot of repair costs later on. You have flooding.
Yeah, oh, for IT for sure, yeah.
That hundred and fifty thousand is just planning.
This is for a design and bid documents, yeah.
Nothing's gonna actually be done, you know.
Call TBD.
Yeah, we haven't got that. Now I want to put a guess in there, yes.
No, because then you won't get the planning.
Yeah, because I mean, between the, you know. Because we'll probably end up putting new windows in, you know, insulating.
They replace a lot of those at one time.
The Lord of Ed may have done years ago, but they're just, they're leaking.
Oh, are they?
Yeah, and there's no insulation in the walls. So you really have to seal up and insulate the walls. And we're looking at. Electric. Heating and air conditioning system with solar panels on the roof so that basically it runs itself.
That, so when that building got decommissioned as a school. Was that budgeted under the Board of Education, you know, while the maintenance of it?
And just, they just give us the school and say it's yours and now it becomes our problem.
Yeah, and then, but it's, I'm just saying, you know, from a budget standpoint, they maintained it originally under the Board of Education budget.
Yes, then now it's under my budget. Yeah, yeah. So you gotta pay for all the. Heating oil and that is a big. Energy hog, that building.
Yeah, no kidding.
To turn it into affordable housing. That would be even more expensive.
Yeah.
No, I mean, it's a good location. Town, real town hall annex.
Yeah, you know.
There was some discussion, I know, about electric heat pumps. These are going with gas on this stuff.
No, we're not doing the gas anymore. We're looking at, as part of the study, the architects doing, they're looking at. They're, they are similar to heat pumps. They're like a fancy commercial split system, very energy efficient, but they use a lot of electricity. So unless you put the solar panels up, you're going to be paying ground utilities a big. So, but it makes sense if you can get the solar panels to, you know, generate all the electricity and you're pretty much self sufficient.
Except on cloudy days.
Yeah, I don't know. I was looking at this and it says fiscal year twenty twenty two.
Yeah, that's, that's, we should probably, that was old language and last year we.
Okay.
We're looking at doing that.
Okay, all right, that's fine. I just want to, I thought that's where we were headed, but I was.
Yeah, we were last year, but not, yeah, probably should have.
Okay, that's fine. I'm glad to hear that. And then that building will run on its own, you're thinking or hoping?
Hoping to, yeah.
That's pretty impressive.
Are there incentives for a building like that? Because I know we just were getting some for our home, Grotten Utilities.
Your Grotten Utilities usually because they're a municipal utility company, they don't have the incentives like an ever source does. I don't know, maybe for residential they do, but.
That's crazy. They have for the schools or whatever.
They're not profit making, so they probably don't.
Yeah, probably don't have any, they don't come under the pure laws.
And does the Fed, you know, contribute or is there any tax benefits from the?
They don't pay taxes.
Maybe they would grant money or something.
Yeah, we would certainly, you know, look.
I guess that's what it.
It's just amazing what can be done with a heat pump now.
Yeah.
The temperature can go down to their efficient, you know. Yeah.
Put them in seventeen below zero, you know, residential, seven below zero, they operate.
Yeah.
We are going to see that here.
No, and Grotten Utilities gives money back for the compressor, but doesn't benefit any other way. You don't get.
Because that way it can, because they want you to use their electricity.
Well, that's right.
Yeah, all right. Yeah, all right, there's nothing else, move on to a rotten public library and page forty seven.
Um, this year we're requesting uh funds for a couple of projects, um, one is the. Plumbing system for the two public restrooms, these are the restrooms that have been there since the building was built, we've had. Problems with um flooding, and I know Jen's on here too, the library director, she could chime in to tell you how many. Times we've been down there to clean out, clean the floors, clean the drain out, so there's something wrong with the plumbing system there, so we wanna investigate and repair that. Um, so that's what this money's for, and then we also um, the addition that we did back in ninety five, ninety six. Believe it or not, it's now getting to be, you know, twenty eight years old, so the roof has reached the end of its useful life, so. Put in money to uh design and develop plans for the roof replacement. And then in twenty five, we'll ask for the construction uh money for that.
Elements, concerns? Forty nine, no funding. Fifteen, no funding, well. Page uh fifty one of. Page fifty two, space about.
Zeroed out.
Yeah.
Yeah, I highlighted some of these.
Yep.
Page fifty three, there's no funding.
Yeah, there's nothing else.
Of course. They did a good job of. Fifty uh six, no funding for fifty seven. The people say sixty, IT. This is expensive.
Yeah, yeah.
Could be a lot more.
Most in hell had uh, you're gonna get four hell had comments on. I guess, point, Town Hall Complex. Town Hall Annex.
I've already forwarded it to Greg, Mark Berry, um, and Sam Kilpatrick.
Okay, go ahead.
How the infrastructure?
Yeah, uh, information technology infrastructure.
Well, uh, for twenty four. I'm requesting a hundred and thirty thousand for this year, and that is basically the ongoing effort to keep the servers hardware and software upgrades. On par, we don't wanna fall too far behind on this, uh, and also the. Another project is the town, wow. I think it's the wireless, and it's, yeah, the hardware, the wireless network we have throughout town, upgrade that, it is getting a little dated and. Heads, wireless heads are starting to fall off, cause we can't get the up- upgrades to them, so we have to do a replacement for those. And we are looking to do an overall town domain upgrade. Which entails renaming everything that we have on the network, uh, that that's a big project. We started, um, we haven't started yet, but years ago, when we first started a network, we just had a single. That network, I can't really think. Land group, used to find land group, and now the standard is something dot land group, so. And it tells, actually rewriting just about everything we have, hardware and software. So that's what that hundred and thirty thousand is um basically gonna be used for.
Any comments? It's page sixty one, there's no funding, sixty two, no funding, page sixty three uh. Secure IT security. Disaster recovery, that's for hackers.
Yeah, uh, we're, I'm requesting seventy three thousand for this, uh, still working on disaster recovery plan. Uh, we've been working on this for years, we do bl- back up into the cloud and tape as redundancy. Um, we are looking also to replace the Palo Alto firewall that we currently have at the town hall. Which is a chunk of that money right there, uh, I'll tell you, that saves us each and every day, hundreds and thousands of times a day. Um, we are also looking to do, we're doing some more network upgrades from hardware that we have from uh last fiscal year. And then we're gonna do a penetration test on our network to see. Where our weaknesses and faults are, and some of this might be used to. Hopefully we don't have any, but patch and uh fixes those faults that we did find or locate before someone else does.
Any comments?
And when you talk about the network, is this the financial network, is this the?
The whole thing, police department.
It's everything.
Dispatch, financials.
Financial schools.
Not the schools.
Not the schools.
Not the schools or the fire departments, but all the other town functions, human services, uh, library. Piece of the library.
So all of the firewall aspects of the schools is under their budget then?
Yes, okay, yes.
Do they have this kind of a system, or would they have it, do you, are you aware of for this new system that they're putting in?
Um, we've had discussions on the system they're putting in, it was a couple of years ago, I'm glad to see they're moving forward with it.
Yeah, you guys are talking.
Yes, yes.
I mean, just so many people are. Good, that's good.
Oh, yeah.
Compatibility, sharing of resources.
Yeah, because the, the, they talk about. You know, the, the PD get access to, we do some work for the uh fire departments too, so we help those.
Anything else?
Having worked with the military, I know how frequently, it's like, our system can't talk to you.
That happens quite aside often.
That's security in itself. Okay, okay, next uh item with funding is sixty five squad car body cans.
Yeah, uh, that's, that's one of the police departments, they kinda surprised me when I looked in here, but um, looks like uh we have. Camp, um. Cameras in all the cars right now, I think it's like twenty two or twenty five vehicles right now. And some of them are being dated, right, four to five years old, that the chief is private request and get those upgraded. Only twelve.
Any concerns on that item? Page sixty six, uh, meeting room, AV presentation equipment replacement. You're talking at it now.
Hello all, I am actually using our technology for the meeting rooms that we just put in, so you're getting a good example of it.
Cancel twenty four. Twenty four, you want more?
Yes, yeah, we, yeah, so what, what we're doing is uh, this year, we're uh doing the town hall in the library. And uh, actually, this week, we uh started the installation at the uh town hall, we have two of the three, three or four rooms done. Uh, and then next year, and then this summer, we'll be doing the uh, in spring, we'll be doing the library. And then, so now the uh, the following year, we wanna do uh the senior center, uh, is really the. The big part of that, uh, and in the uh, uh, Parks and Recreation Conference Room as well, so we're trying to catch everybody up so that. Uh, when you walk into a meeting room, uh, you know how to use the equipment, whether you're at the annex, town hall, or any town building, you should be able to know how to use it.
Any comments, concerns? Let's see, the next one was funding on page sixty nine, fire EMS radio control. Station installation.
Yeah, this is another one, the, the chief is requesting to have um, upgrade the um. The radio platform that they currently have within their system. Um, I guess there's been various issues with it, repairs, not good when it goes down.
So, this is just hardware? I, what about this, this, are we on the right networks, or?
I think they are, but I think the hardware would come with its own software infrastructure, software on it.
Any questions, concerns on that? Page uh seventy, police evidence processing command vehicle.
Kinda speaks for itself.
Who wants the toy? It's only two fifty. Buy a Ferrari for that.
That's right, this is a Ferrari.
Have to do the Maserati. Any comments on that item?
I was just curious why they, why they ordered one, I just didn't.
You only need one, it's a command center, you can only have one person in charge.
Well, hopefully we don't have more than one event. So this is just for a really big deal, and it'll be at the police station or wherever, or maybe it'll be out, they expect something, you know.
Serious accidents.
Or uh, controlling, if you're gonna have a big.
Large scale incident.
A big rally or something. Hmm, big concert.
Yep.
Hmm, outside, I would think, that's when you. You'd probably move it.
Yeah, big fire.
Oh, yeah.
Whatever, or crime scene, they pull up like the state police do.
Yeah.
Something, obviously a little less.
But if you have a big event, it's say ten or twenty thousand people in the field or something, you might wanna have it stationed there to begin with, I would think.
Yeah, I know, I'm just curious, I know some towns around here, they don't even have their own police department.
So then you give a process person right there.
Yeah.
So no comments on that, okay, page uh seventy one, planning, public works, electronic document management system.
Sure, I can speak to that.
She is.
Rest safe.
So, we're running out of room, is really the, the, one of the reasons, um. We have a vault in this building and both public works and planning, this is it, as well as the town clerk's office. Um, we are required by state law to keep plans and files for X number of years. Um, and we're running out of room, plus we're also moving to digital, so. Now, when we get applications, then I'm not sure about public works, but we're, we're requesting everything digital as well as paper, so that. We can easily pull records and we, you know, if someone's working remote one day, they can access it and and complete their work, so what we'd like to do is. Is scan all of the plans that are downstairs, all of the files, um, so that we have a complete record in digital form.
That saves us from building another vault.
Certainly does.
Well, is this really enough to cover all of that, that's a lot of records.
There are, no, it it is, actually, we've gotten quotes from um a company who, who does this sort of thing, it's all they do.
And then what, it will be saved in more than one place?
Right, that's correct, and so, and it will be organized so that we can, they're not just gonna, here's all your files, they're gonna organize.
Partially, also, so we'll have access or some ability to access.
Right, yeah.
That's.
Logical fashion.
That's the hardest thing to do once. Organize it so you can locate.
Yep.
And that, that data will be on, on the town network, so it will be backed up.
Most, most things are ten years, but there are some you have to keep in perpetuity.
Lot of land records, I think.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
But then do you send hard copies to like Iron Mountain or something, you know?
I'm in the vault.
Yeah, but eventually you'll never, will never need.
That's, that's right, that's right, that's right.
Originally. It's electronic.
That's the plan.
That is the plan.
All you gotta do is get all the local engineering firms to use it.
Oh, most of them.
Common, they all use digital, but.
They do.
All different.
Yeah, I mean, we've had pretty good luck, they're, they're pretty consistent, and they know, you should be going to online permitting. Um, in the next, we'll say, six months.
Yeah.
What's that?
Give us some leadway.
Yeah.
Gonna lose the internet. Okay, next uh page, I've got a seventy three economic assistance.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you, thank you.
So this is a fund, um, that clearly is used by our economic development division, um. To generally fund infrastructure that is above and beyond what um a developer might have expected. You know, an extraordinary stormwater system, for example, in WRPD, um, extensions of sidewalks that they didn't um anticipate. Um, something that goes through the Economic Development Commission in the town council, and periodically it needs to be replenished.
So this is really just a holding pattern in the budget.
Exactly.
It's a budgetary holding pattern, it's not an actual.
What is, what is sif need?
What is sif need, I don't remember, yeah, I don't remember what they needed.
Standard in there too.
I understand, yeah.
But there's a large uh uncommitted fund balance, it seems like with a balance of three hundred and seventy thousand.
But this is just purely a budget.
Well, I mean.
No specific.
No, right, right, I mean, it's. Funds aside every year, so if you don't use, it'll be over four hundred thousand.
That's correct, okay, yep.
Oh, you.
Well, it's like, what's the idea of the golden amount that you need, you know, it's like.
You know, at one point, we had as much as seven hundred thousand. Yeah, yeah. Yep, no, I mean, I don't, yeah, things come up there, just. Yeah, exactly.
This isn't Monday lo- money laundering, is it?
I don't believe it is.
Well, yeah. No, but I mean, you have to, if the, if you have more money than you spend in a year, you either have to give it back or put it. Fund or something, it's very, otherwise you can't keep.
Right.
Can't keep, that's maybe. I call it. Uh, next is uh seventy four, open space acquisition.
Right, um, we spent down the, this fund when we acquired Wolfbrook, we've um, just added a little bit, well, twenty five thousand. Lots to it, um, as a result of an open space fee in lieu of for a recent subdivision approval, um, so. The department's asking for twenty five, excuse me.
Anybody have any cause?
This won't buy much.
Request or asked that that number, I mean, this number has been stuck at this probably since I've been on.
Sure.
Commission.
Well, we do have funding when, when we have developments, if they are.
I know, but it doesn't, it doesn't always get infected frequently, doesn't even get funded. I just, I look at the number right before fifty thousand dollars for a development.
Plus they can take the money out of the economic develop.
Yeah. I, I would absolutely like to see that, that uh, fun, increase, funded, at least at a level. Reflective of.
Maybe you should make that as a comment.
Sure. I would like to, yeah, I mean, we've made that comment in the past, it doesn't always, but I think that.
I think that's a good, good point, cause given all the, um, I mean, still we have this COVID mentality, I think. There's still a lot of outdoor activity, I think a lot more than there was before, the use of the town parks and everything like that, and these other initiatives get to connect them.
Or these.
All that sort of thing, not a bad idea.
But having a felt that we can build a more greenway, so at least change one, I would think that's something else.
Well, exactly, there's still.
I would suggest that it be, that it just match that other number, that fifty thousand, but I don't, if that's, if people think that's appropriate, but.
I don't know that we want to.
No, no, okay, all right.
You, that's fine. Specifically, or just say that we recommend this be increased.
I think it's always been a uh, difficult thing to get through all the um, the whole process habit.
Or I would, I would, the comment that I would make is that, that I would view the economic development and the acquisition of open space. At, at equal levels, whatever you would, you know. If I would think.
I think we're buying more and more the.
And they both work together to make you the town a better place.
We should, maybe it would be easier to, you ask, it should be increased to fif- say. Just as our, so fifty one, yeah, that's a small amount, maybe we should just increase to fifty.
We have, it'll be interesting to hear what the reaction is.
I know, well.
Yeah, maybe so, but I do think a lot of people are realizing the value.
Well, if nothing else, it, it uh makes a conversation.
No, but it opens a discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah. Hey, uh, page seventy five, gateway funding sign project.
So this is a continuation of the signage project that's been going on for a couple of years now, um. This past year, I think you've seen the welcome to Groton. Um, signs that went up at Route one and one seventeen and a couple at exit eighty-eight. Um, and this is a continuation, um, implementation of the plan that was developed probably five or six years ago.
We lost the one, it looks like at that, by the library, is that?
Uh, not by the library, the one at one seventeen.
Yeah, one seventeen, well, yeah.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yep.
Down or?
No, it's someone hit it.
Oh.
Drove into it.
Oh, they took it out.
They did. Yes, they did.
Oh, they went to the penalty box.
Does their insurance?
You aren't supposed to check.
That's the goal.
Does their insurance?
Comprehensive or?
Have to call them the TV lawyers to get. Any other concerns that's a signage? Downtown Mystic Parking Management.
So these are funds to implement the recommendations of the, of the parking management study that could include some of these bulleted items.
Metered parking.
Yep, Stoneton shot that down, so that mean.
I, I think they are still exploring ways to fund that. I know.
Are they?
Yeah, they are.
Economics of all. Actually, you. Economic development issue. Okay, page, uh, seventy-seven Mystic Coastal Access Trail. And signage program. Dick Fitzgerald Memorial Sign.
Yep, so this is funding to replace the coastal access signs, um, that are currently in place, um, that are. Just basic signs, um, so this will be, um, a combination of kiosks that have a map on it. Um, with a standard, um, signage that will basically wrap around of here as well as markings on the ground. So that people know how to go from, like, yes, from central hall all the way down to four Rachel at this point.
Are these thing, will they include like, I'm certain that like QR codes or like the town website?
Right.
Would then.
Yeah, that's the.
Link to this stuff or that's not part of this?
No, it is. I mean, it's, yeah, yeah.
Because I think that more and more, and hopefully, you know, at some point we can do away with a lot of signs if we can do it electronically and then you avoid that cost.
What about the other coastal access in town? I mean, I have to say, I was annoying and I had no idea there's this gorgeous beach.
That'll be phase two.
Really?
No, seriously, yeah.
I think it'd be great.
Yeah. A lot more coastal access than Mystic.
The beach that's behind, uh, the oyster farm, the oyster hatchery, somewhere else. So, oh, you're not.
Is that the one?
The stairs.
Yeah, the stairs, right. Beautiful.
Yep, and then there's the triplet open space that we got, um, that's down past Abbott's, it's a.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, really?
There's a little sign there, it's this big grassy area, and, yeah.
Yep, yeah, that'd be great.
Is there parking in these places?
Most.
There is.
That one, there is, yeah, that's right.
The fancy beach, the secret fancy beach. I can't say. No, I got the inside.
Seth, one horse, wasn't there somebody there that owned some of the properties that was always coming on a rough time? Over access.
That's the one, but there's, there is some parking there and then there are stairs to get down to the beach.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, two cars can get in.
Right.
If they're friendly.
Planet Conservation.
Yep.
Now we have, uh, page seventy-eight, P O C D.
Right, so as, as you all know, we have to have one adopted by twenty twenty-six. So the idea is to, to get working on it, um, sooner than later.
Takes a long time.
It does.
This is just funding for one year though, is that the whole? Okay, so beginning to end, even though some of it would go into other years.
Contract would be signed.
Right.
So consultant, uh, it's a song consult.
Yeah, is this thinking of doing it the way that we had, from what we had.
Yes.
Cause that's quite a low price, I think. For some other numbers I've seen in the past.
Well, it sounded like some of the companies that did, did that were, they were limited, weren't they? The limited number of companies that did that, wasn't that?
Um, no, there's, there's a good.
Oh.
There's a lot of companies who do plans.
Oh, thanks.
Yeah.
Well, I don't, it was some, the one plan that we saw from Hartford was from California.
Right.
So it's, we're just not that company, but that style.
Right.
Okay.
And at, at one time we were talking about trying to align it because there was a population study. Remember, I think the last one, it was a population study and it, it was an off year. It was like two years after or one year after, we were talking about trying to align those.
Right, um, yeah, and I think there was also an issue when we were updating our, our geographic information system. Um, with mapping, but there was an.
That was happening one year after the P O C D.
That sort of stuff pushes it out.
So are we more aligned now or less?
No, I think so. We are more aligned. We are, yes, we are.
The city has to do this as well.
They do.
Do we, um, share, like, do they do limit, they're two different, done at different times?
They are. I've gotten, um, gotten Long Point has to do it as well.
Really?
Anyone with a planning commission.
And they have to go through like the process beginning to end, there's not an ability to share the.
Well, sharing, it's, it's unique to that.
Yeah, no, I just, I mean, it seems like some of the research that's done. Stuff like that.
Or they might pull that up, research maybe.
Twice, three times.
But knowing doesn't do their own, you know, they don't have a, this is the planning commission for knowing.
We do planning for.
So where do their P O C D?
Yes, about the planning.
But they have a zone.
They just, they do zoning regulation.
Yeah.
But we have to, if there's an item and asked to. You know, we have had.
Not frequently.
No, but we've had issues that have come up. I remember that we're zoning, planning, knowing, planning things. I can't remember. Alright, moving on. Where everything ends up. AJD tools or alignment, the structure.
I think I'm gonna recute myself because it involves my neighborhood.
Not why.
And I have to pay things, so.
Pump stations.
Yeah.
I'll be back in particular project, yeah. Thank you.
So I guess the first item, page eighty-three, pump stations.
Yeah, several projects here, the first is, um. The Bumford Cove Pump Stations is one of our major pump stations. It's the last one that takes the east side of town before it gets to the treatment plant. Um, we had put money in last, uh, last year, um. It was gonna be about a million dollars just to replace the pumps and some controllers, but we found out we gotta place all the valves and, and a bunch of other pieces of equipment after we got in there. To do that, we have to do a bypass pump system, which can be expensive. It's a temporary bypass, but it's very expensive to put in. So we're looking for some additional funds, one point two million, so that we can get this project done.
Does that get bonded or do we have?
No, we have.
That comes out of our fees.
The sewer user fees. We have a pretty hefty fund balance right now. Um, we've, they've been saving up some funds over the years so that we have enough that, you know, they can pay for this without. Maybe, but it's, it's, they'll have to look at the sewer fees to see if there's gonna be an increase and maybe a very small one if anything.
I, I just, but it's not a major. Oh, it just seems like a lot of money.
Yeah. The second one is for the gravel street pump station, which is in downtown Mystic, and we started a project that we had funded for a number of years ago. Um, just took a while to get going and COVID hit and it really delayed some equipment there like for years. So the funding actually expired on that one, so we're just looking to reallocate the funds that expired. Uh, so we can finish up this project this year.
What happens to the parking lot there?
Uh, the central hall's got a lease.
Once it's done, yeah, it'll.
Oh, is that?
It will be.
So they need this done to.
This doesn't have anything to do with central hall, but.
No, I just wanted, yeah, but if you get a store.
Oh, yeah, we have. You know, use the parking lot if you have to put like a crane or something to get equipment into the building.
No, I was just questioning.
Yeah. Uh, and then the last one is six hundred thousand for resiliency, uh, upgrades to all our coastal pump stations. This is, uh, we had a study done last year. Um, all the, you know, most of our pump stations are, you know, in low line areas. So looking at, uh, ways to deal with the, uh, rising sea levels and, you know, increased storm events. Uh, we are. Um, gonna be applying for a, uh. Department of Homeland Security grant for this, which would be a ninety percent reimbursement. We're, working with Megan on that.
Any concerns for? And then, uh, age eighty-four. Treatment facility.
You know, we've got, uh, two projects here, um. A few years ago, we upgraded our affluent pump station. This is the pump station that takes all the treated sewage and pumps it over to the things river. Uh, we put all new pumps and, and valves in, in that station that was a bonded project. Um, we left some spaces for additional pumps and looking to purchase a, a jacky pump, which is a much smaller pump that will. Most of the time we don't have a lot of flows, especially at night, so we have one smaller pump, but we just have one of them and that one's constantly running, you know? So we wanna get another one, uh, so that we can kind of alternate between two of them. So if one of them goes down for repairs or something, we have a, a standby. Uh, but it just, it, it's cheaper to run a smaller pump when, sometimes when that's all we really need. And the second one is kind of an interesting, right now we, uh, sterilize our effluent with chlorine. And, you know, that's a, that chemical, obviously very caustic, it does a number on our pumps, um, you know, and. There's employee issues, you know, using that for, for safety, so we're looking at going to a UV sterilization method. A lot of plants are going to that method now, which is just a bunch of light bulbs, you get put into the. And it, you know, kills all the bacteria and everything.
So all the effluent would go through, goes through this.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
You can use UV.
You can use UV to sterilize it, you know, still meet your permit requirements.
That's probably a good plus.
Yeah. Oh, absolutely. And, and the, the cost of chlorine is just going up to the chemical costs.
But it's good not to have to handle.
Not to handle it and then it's just, if it's eaten, it eats all the pumps and the pipe away, it's just.
And then you have to remove the chlorine before it goes in the river, right?
No, it goes, it stays in there and then just gets. Comes out to the river.
They've done that, they just had a, this old house on it and they were talking about this very issue. And they said, we put the chlorine in, it's gotta kill the bugs, then we gotta take it out.
Oh, really?
And so in, for Boston, I guess they, they have a method.
Maybe.
I thought that mostly aeration removes a lot of the chlorine.
Yeah, we do aeration, but that's before, the chlorine is the last treatment that goes through before.
But the UV, they actually were talking about the exact same thing, to upgrade their system. The UV.
Sounds like a better method.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And what do they, have like a giant, you know, obviously you need a lot of surface area, so.
Yeah, it's, it's basically a channel that the effluent flows through and use, these big banks of lights that go right down into the water.
Oh, so it's not like a flat grid or something where you get a lot of surface area, it's.
Yeah.
Be a labyrinth.
It's, yeah, labyrinth, it's an open channel, but these things just dropped right inside. But, you know, one goes out, you just see light goes out, you just take it out, put a new bulb in.
Changing.
Back down it.
And free tanks.
You're storing all this stuff on site now, the chlorine.
Yeah, we have a special.
Buildings are stored. It seems like a.
Yeah.
Environmental hazard. Like a, and when are, when are we doing this? Hopefully soon.
Oh, we're doing all the, um, engineering stuff this year and then so we'll be looking at next year to get all the equipment and renovations. Good.
It's not so long.
How much you pay for chlorine a year?
Um, I wanna say it's around a hundred thousand dollars.
So this will pay for itself in seven years.
Yeah.
Central electricity.
Well, electricity will be going up the output solar panel or something.
I think there's gonna be a big bind. They wanna do everything convert right away and the grid's not gonna.
Oh, yeah.
And that building power stations best. Won't even, your electric car, you won't be able to charge it.
Solar panels. Go over to, go over to the, yeah, town hall.
Okay, anything else and we have? Then we have any other things?
Nope.
Should we be asking for more funds for the sidewalk? I just wonder if you support that too.
You know, that's always, uh, sure that there's more side.
Find more sidewalks.
Oh, that's from a safety standpoint.
Yeah.
I just wanted.
And just upgrades. What page was that? That was on seventeen? Or no? See sidewalks, I just opened it right up.
That's for seventy-five thousand.
It was so. Still side, uh.
Very much. Sidewalk.
Pick it up with the same trap money.
Yeah, there you go.
B B. Project three B.
What page is this on?
Uh, page eighteen of the document.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I would, I mean, that doesn't seem like a, a big number to me.
In the station, you see an awful lot of people walking their dogs continuously every day. I don't know, they, because of the pandemic, it got everybody out of their house. But you still see a lot of people walking.
Greg, when you replace these things, are you replacing like for like? So if it's an asphalt sidewalk, are you upgrading it to concrete or you?
Um, only if there's like concrete, you know, if it was asphalt patch or a short section of asphalt, we'd go to concrete. Otherwise, if, if like it's a whole mile long of asphalt, we'd probably just go back to asphalt.
But I, I will, you know, seven, five Ks.
No, it doesn't seem like, it seems like a drop in the.
Maybe we should ask, but suggest that it go, be increased to a hundred to su- support the.
Yeah, the connectivity and everything else. No, no. All or something.
Well, I think, yeah, no, that's the kind of thing that.
The number of people you see.
Although I think that's true, it's part of the same, a lot more people at some.
Five thousand dollars is one accident, you know, somebody trips on something that's gonna cost you that much money anyway, then you didn't.
Yeah, but I think it's good to support physical exercise.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Everybody sitting in front of their T T O. So maybe we should.
So part of the big.
Do you have a, do you have a number that you would, I mean, what's your, what's the? Well, no, I mean.
Yeah, but if you go too high, then the council.
No, I would just like to see that. That's an important thing and it seems like it's, uh, money well spent.
But, yeah, I mean, I can.
Yeah, projects. There are a lot of sidewalks in the town.
Well, what's the life of a sidewalk? I mean, it's concrete side.
Concrete side, there's no trees around. Almost forever, you know, if you don't keep the salt off it and the, the tree roots really start pushing.
So tree roots, I think.
But then we're spending.
Well, that's just what I'm trying to do is the math problem. We have six hundred and fifty thousand linear feet of concrete sidewalk and if you divide that length by the anticipated life of a sidewalk. I don't know if it's fifty years or one hundred years, then you would expect to have to replace that much, that number each year, right? I mean, it would seem to me. Oh, no, but that's so mad, right?
No, just give them an easy number.
I think it's trees too.
That's why I think that the number isn't, they don't last forever.
We're spending money, actually, we have grants to plant trees by sidewalks and stuff like that, right? And to make this a nice, you know, tree.
Well, can we, can we come up with a number and then justify it somehow?
No, it's not just a. No, it's not justified, it's just something that's reasonable.
And I think if we try, try a hundred.
You ask, seventy-five is the number, like, I, I just came up, it seemed like nobody's gonna shoot that down.
Yeah, you want it.
Excuse me, something to. For this, we had nothing, I had nothing three years ago, and I started doing this three years ago, and. There's no, nobody asked a question.
Well, the thing too is that if you can.
Gets too high, then they never.
I know, that's what I'm saying, a hundred is a good.
I think just.
But, but I, what I like about what, what you're telling us here is that the repairs that are, you're doing, where you're.
Oh, keep it, yeah.
Yeah, the trip haters and fixing those.
Yeah.
Which then avoids having to rip the whole thing out and replace it.
Yeah, we only, those two hundred and fifty things that only cost us ten thousand dollars to the contractor, and he went up and down Route one. In like, a week or two and, and got all the, you know. Sidewalks took it up.
Yeah.
Where all those things, which is.
Well, it's most important, I think, too, is that you cut those roots or something else, but I would rather see us spend money. Fixing sidewalks that way, and then you don't get a bigger number replacing, you know.
Yeah, well, you gotta think of the politicians.
No, I do, well. You know, this is. You know, we, we pay for every time somebody gets hurt.
Oh, yes, every time a claim comes in.
Is that, is that a lot?
We get several a year.
Yeah.
People trip and fall.
I mean, did end up in lawsuits and payments.
Usually the insurance companies will settle a lot of court, I don't think they've really ever gone to court on these things, but.
Okay.
You know.
Well, but if you're also, if you're going to the insurance company. It's cost more and more times than you're.
Yeah.
What you're paying goes up to, they're not working. Paying that money out for free. Alright, no, that's fine, if one hundred is what people.
Well, so.
Yeah, no, that's.
Has a good chance.
Yeah, it's, it seems like a reasonable number to me for. What you're getting.
So you've increased something. Uh, what's, anything that's gonna. Increase your taxes.
Yeah.
He's getting people thinking about it.
And then would you change all the numbers then? All the way out?
And it's, I'd probably start.
I mean, if you look at just what. If you look at just what inflation has been in the last year.
Oh, yeah, a hundred, probably the seventy-five for this year, it's gonna be.
Doesn't work.
Does anybody have anything else?
No, I got a pet peeve question, though.
I'll make sure.